If you will, bow your heads please and let's observe a moment of silence on this national day of prayer. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, May 5, 2011. And before we get started, I want to give everybody a heads up that this Sunday is Mother's Day. All of us have mothers, don't forget them, living or dead, and we certainly want to say how much we appreciate our mothers and hope everyone has a wonderful Mother's Day. Also, this is Public Service Recognition Week, and in recognition of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city level who serve Americans every single day, we want to point out these unsung heroes of working public employees who take the oath to serve the public seriously. And many of our public servants include military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, health care professionals, and others. They risk their lives each day in the service to the people of the United States and around the world. And these servants of the public include teachers, and doctors, and scientists, and train conductors, and astronauts, nurses, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless others who provide services that we demand of our government, and they do it day in and day out with the efficiency and integrity that we require. Without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy, and that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. So I, Tommy Bragg, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim May 1 through May 7 as Public Service Recognition Week in Murfreesboro, and urge all of our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at every level, whether federal, state, county, or city. And we certainly, as a council, are proud of our city employees and those who work with us every day on the front line that we get to deal with. So I appreciate them, and I have this proclamation, and I certainly appreciate their work and everything they do for us. Certainly, we've had pause and an opportunity to recognize them in the last week and a half for some work that's been gone in our city because of wind and rain and other things. Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, certainly, our communities had another event where we've had some homes that have had some damage, and once again, our city employees demonstrated what a tremendous team they are. In four days, we picked up over 1,600 tons of brush, and it's been a real team effort. Everybody has rolled up their sleeves, jumped in and helped out. Even departments like Water and Sewer, which normally are not in the brush removal business, stopped what they were doing so that they could lend some aid to residents. I know you've seen some of the emails and received some of the same calls I have, and that has been our community, once again, has been very appreciative of our employees' outstanding efforts. So I don't want to list them all, I'll forget somebody, but I can tell you, everybody has pitched in. It's been all hands on deck. Once again, they did a great job. We appreciate the recognition on Public Servants Week, and we will pass that along with our staff.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? If not, again, thanks for a job well done, and we certainly are aware of that recognition, and we want to point out how much we appreciate these front-line persons who we get to deal with every day, and they are very good to us. Thank you. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Young. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have the minutes of the April 21, 2011, regular meeting before you. Are there any questions, additions, or deletions regarding those minutes as presented? If there are none, is there a motion that we accept the minutes as they've been presented?
Move, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.37 acres located in the Liberty Village PRD from a planned residential development PRD district to a single-family residential 15, RS 15 district, and to amend the remaining Liberty Village PRD approximately 37.37 acres to exclude this area.
Move for approval on third reading.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing and consider for approval a certificate of compliance for Andy Patel at Meadows Liquor 420-4205B, Manson Pike, a new location. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is a new location, as you mentioned. I did get one letter in my office, which I have passed on to you, questioning the name
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on April 7, 2011,
and whether or not that location should have a liquor store. The background check on the old name and the new name came back fine.
we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 15.5 acres from planned
Mr. Patel indicated to me he changed his name, it's almost been 10 years ago now, when
commercial development, PCD district, to highway commercial, CH district, 13.4 acres
he lived in New Jersey, but we did a background check on both locations under both names,
from planned commercial development, PCD district, to a residential multifamily 16,
and there's no problem with that. And the zoning for this location was changed in March on third reading after a public
RM 16 district, and 12.9 acres from planned commercial development, PCD district, to
hearing, so the zoning is fine for a liquor store in this location.
single-family residential 15, RS 15 district, along Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. All right. Mark Pearl Development is the applicant. I'll open the public hearing. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 17, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and council members.
for Andy Patel at Meadows Liquor 4205B, Manson Pike?
This first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning approximately 41.8 acres
Anyone here wishing to speak?
located along the eastern side of Highway 99, our New Salem Highway, and along Salem,
Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time.
or, I'm sorry, along Warrior Drive.
And is there a motion that we approve this certificate of compliance?
The property is illustrated on the map that I've included in your packet, and also the
So move.
map that's on the screen, as the area is shaded blue, purple, and orange.
Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
The request is to rezone this 41-point acre to three separate zones, therefore, there
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
are three separate colors illustrating those areas on the map.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
To the north, let's see, get back to my memory. To the north of the subject property is property zoned RS 15, and that's an interim zoning that was zoned RS 15 by default when it was annexed. Staff expects at some future date there'll be a request to come before you to change that zoning because, for the major reason, that it is located on the interchange of Highway 99 and Interstate 24. Across Salem Highway is property zoned Light Industrial District and RS 10. The RS 10 property is undeveloped. The property to the west, and to the west is in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The properties to the south are developed single-family subdivisions. Across Warrior Drive, there are two areas zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District, and that's the location of a proposed John Deere Landscape Center and a driving range. Both of those PCD zones are inactive. Staff expects at some future date, when, I guess, there's an opportunity to move, that you will see a request to change that zoning. The John Deere Landscaping Company has located to another area in our community in the driving range. Idea is just not going to happen. Riverdale High School is located just to the southeast of the property, and you can see that it's zoned RS 15, and interchange for Highway 99 and Interstate 24 is just to the north of the study area. A significant portion of this property is inundated with the West Fork of the Stones River floodway and floodplain, and driving by, you may see that area, and sometimes you may see somebody fishing down there. There is a 100-foot wide TVA easement also that runs through the property. The applicant's requesting for you to consider changing the zone from PCD, from planned commercial district, to CH, to RM 16, and to RS 15. The CH zone stands for Commercial Highway District. The RM 16 zone stands for Multi-Family Residential District, and the RS 15 zone stands for Single-Family Residential District. And as you know, with planned developments, there's a specific plan that's approved for the property. And the area that is shaded blue on the map that you have, under the current PCD, allows some commercial parcels to be developed. The proposed plan is very similar to that, and of course, as part of that PCD package, you can see there's a list of uses that the applicant's proposed to be permitted on those eight commercial parcels. And if it were rezoned to CH, then those uses that you would normally see in our Commercial Highway District would be those that were permitted. Also, you see the large area that's to the south. The current PCD says that it can be developed with a 75,000-square-foot office complex. The office complex was to be comprised of 20 office units, for a total of 75,000 square feet, and that was on 15.8 acres. The proposed plan is now to no longer do offices, but in the area shaded purple on the map, for you to rezone that to RM 16, which would allow multifamily residential uses. It also allows some other uses by right, such as institutional uses, like a church. The applicant's also requesting that the area that's orange be rezoned to RS 15. Essentially, the area that's shaded orange is undevelopable because it's mostly underwater. But just as a good faith effort to show that there are no intentions to develop that area that's in the floodway, he's proposing our least dense and most restrictive zone, which is RS 15, to be located there. You'll also notice that there's an orange strip that's just to the south of the purple area, and the applicant's put that RS 15, or proposing that RS 15 strip as another good faith effort to add additional buffer between the existing single-family houses to the south and the proposed RM 16 district in purple. That 50, we've often said that distance is the best buffer, so in addition to the required landscaping buffer that we would require to separate a multifamily use from a single-family residential use, they're also proposing to have this 50-foot wide buffer. The Salem Pike land use study recommends that this property develop as an interstate commercial node with community-scale commercial uses that benefit from regional thoroughfare access with a potential park site, and you will know that the Greenway runs along this area. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to rezone these properties to, from PCD to CH, to RM 16, and to RS 15. Mr. Pearl is here this evening, and he's the applicant. He also has two representatives, Mr. Bill Huddleston and Mr. Don Harney, who are in the audience. I don't know, do either of you want to speak at this time? If you have any questions from them, either before or after the public hearing, they'll be glad to answer them, so will staff, but you should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning this property.
Any questions for Ms. Ely from the council before we go on? Anyone? All right, if not, we'll open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone here wishing to speak for or against this request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone 15.5 acres to Highway Commercial, CH district, 13.4 acres to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 district, and 12.9 acres to single-family residential 15, RS 15 district, along Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. All right, thank you. We have a motion. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on April 7, 2011, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning the Creekwood subdivision, approximately 29.8 acres located west of South Church Street, from single-family residential 15, RS 15 district, to a duplex residential RD district. Tim and Sandra Darley are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 17, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is to consider rezoning the entire Creekwood subdivision, which is located along the western side of Highway 231 or South Church Street. The properties are currently zoned RS 15, single-family residential district, and there are 35 lots within this subdivision, and each of these 35 lots has one two-family dwelling located on it, or we can call them duplexes, two-family dwellings. The properties to the north are zoned CH, Commercial Highway, and RM 12, multifamily residential district. Properties to the west are zoned RZ, Zero Lot Line Residential District. Properties to the south are zoned RM 12 and RM 16, both forms of multifamily residential districts. And the properties to the immediate east are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Across Highway 231 or South Church Street are properties zoned PUD, and that's the location of a developed single-family subdivision and golf course. This came to our attention because the property that you see, the subject area is shaded blue on the map that I've included in your packets, but there's one parcel that I haven't put hatch marks on, and the owner of that property, which is 248 A&amp;B Caroline Drive, approached Planning Department and requested that his property be rezoned. When we took a closer look at his request, and the Planning Commission took a closer look at the request, they decided to expand that rezoning to include the entire subdivision. And the reason for that is these properties were developed in the county. They were planted in 1978, and the Creekwood subdivision was then developed with 35 duplexes. And all the structures were on septic tank rather than our sanitary sewer. Now, some of the structures are on our sanitary sewer, but still somewhere on septic tanks. The City of Murfreesboro annexed this Creekwood subdivision in 1995 so that the city would not create an island of unincorporated area within our boundaries, and we're familiar with that concept. The property was annexed with an interim zoning of RS 15. That's because if the City of Murfreesboro rezones any property zoned for residential purposes in the county, when annexed, it gets a default zoning of RS 15, single-family residential district. Since at that time, there was no request made to change that zoning, all 35 of these two-family dwellings became lawfully established nonconforming uses. It was discussed, when I read the minutes back during the meetings in 1995, that in the future, there would be a plan or study that would come from planning staff to Planning Commission and Council to consider changing the zoning for these parcels. Of course, now it's 2011, and we're just being faced with this issue at this time. So staff studied the area, Planning Commission studied the area. It's currently developed with those duplexes. Duplexes seem to be a good fit for that area. We haven't gotten any complaints from any of the surrounding users, and as a matter of fact, many of the surrounding users are very compatible with the, or all the surrounding uses are compatible with the proposed zoning. If you did decide to rezone this property to RD, which is the request, residential duplex, it would then allow the existing uses to be uses that are permitted by right. So what that does is if the structures are destroyed, the owners can expect to be able to build a two-family dwelling back. Under the current zoning, if the structures were completely destroyed, they'd have to build back a single-family house. So essentially, this rezoning to RD would legitimize the existing uses, and they would no longer be considered nonconforming uses. The Planning Commission did recommend this rezoning unanimously. The City Council should conduct a public hearing before you consider this zoning change, but the zoning change is to consist of the entire Creekwood subdivision, which is 29.8 acres, to rezone it from single-family residential district to RD, residential duplex. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
RZ. What is?
RZ is Zero Lot Line Residential District.
Is Z zero lot?
Mm-hmm. And the proposed request is RD, as in duplex residential district.
All right, any questions from Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning of the Creekwood subdivision, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tim Darley. I live at 7706 Broadwood Drive in Christiana, Tennessee, and I'm the owner of the property, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions you may have.
We were having it this time, but if you have anything to say, we'd be happy to hear it.
Well, sir, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Ely and the Planning Commission for working with me on this. We purchased the property back in 2004. I paid cash for it at the time so that my son could go to MTSU while we were here, where we were building a home in Christiana. But we didn't know about the zoning classification at that time. Unfortunately, the past two years, we can neither take a loan against the property or sell the property with this caveat, so that's why we stepped forward and brought this to the Planning Zone's attention, and that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone Creekwood subdivision located west of South Church Street to duplex residential RD district.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
All right, thank you very much. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider a request of the Assistant Director of Human Resources to approve a service agreement between GovernmentJobs.com Incorporated, Doing Business, as NeoGov, and the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Welcome, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. I'm requesting approval for a service agreement between GovernmentJobs.com Incorporated and the City of Murfreesboro. The city currently accepts between 3,000 and 4,000 paper employment applications per year. Applications are accepted in person, by mail, and by fax. The Human Resources Department seeks to provide a more efficient and effective process for applicants. Additionally, an online application process is expected to increase our applicant pool and therefore capture a larger, more diverse group of candidates. Lastly, we'd like to move from the manual process of capturing EEO compliance information to a more detailed customized system. The NeoGov Insight Enterprise application is a leading provider of on-demand management solutions, which is built exclusively for government. The system has the ability to meet all the city's applications' needs, as well as provide real-time reporting without the need to purchase additional software from another provider. References were obtained from Metro Nashville and Chattanooga, and they are very pleased with NeoGov. The terms of the service agreement include a non-reoccurring and provisioning and training cost of $8,500 and an annual recurring cost of $7,500 effective July 1, 2011. These sums were not budgeted in the current fiscal year and will be paid from unforeseen. The reoccurring amount will be budgeted in future years with the ability to end our relationship if we're not totally satisfied within a 60-day notice. I am requesting your approval for the service agreement between GovernmentJobs.com Incorporated and the City of Murfreesboro, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Russell regarding this recommendation?
This is going to be good for our Human Resource Department and President workload. It will be a great benefit to them. We believe it is also going to be a good thing for applicants who want to work for the city in terms of automating that process, so we think this will have a win for us on both sides.
Our department is being involved in this.
Yes, that's one of the things that I think is going to make the application process easier, not only easier for the applicant to submit their application to the city, but then the interface between the Human Resource Department and the Hiring Department, we think, is going to increase the efficiencies and make it more effective.
School board's not involved with this.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I move we approve the recommendation. Second.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gully?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to bids for the construction of Veterans Parkway, formerly the Southwest Loop, Phase 2, from the intersection of Kimbrough and Barfield Roads to near the entrance of Barfield Crescent Park on Barfield Crescent Road. Welcome Chief Engineer Griffith.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bragg. I appreciate that. I do have for you tonight one item on the agenda, and that's the contract for the construction of Veterans Parkway 2A. We received 10 bids on April 5 for the construction of Veterans Parkway, which will extend, as you mentioned, from the intersection of Kimbrough Road and Barfield Road to near the entrance of Barfield Crescent Park. This will essentially complete a five-lane section from Church Street to the Barfield Road, Kimbrough Road intersection. I've included the site map for your use also. Phase 2B of this project is currently scheduled to begin in 2012 in your 2010-2014 capital improvement plan. Completion of both of these phases will complete the four or five-lane section from Church Street to State Route 99. The low total bid in the amount of $4,857,031.31 was submitted by Dement Construction Company of Jackson, Tennessee. The budgeted amount for the construction of the project was $5 million in our latest CIP. Staff notes that this is the first project Dement Construction has been the low bidder for on the city. However, they have completed numerous large-scale projects for the Tennessee Department of Transportation and currently have an office just outside of the city limits. Staff and our consultant, Wiser Company, have reviewed the qualifications and references of Dement and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Wisers provided a tabulation of bids and also the letter of recommendation which is attached. Staff recommends award of a contract to Dement Construction, subject to review and approval of the agreement by our city attorney with funding from the latest TML loan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith? Certainly, this is an exciting project, another piece to the long puzzle to get us across the south and southwest portion of our community and our, we were very pleased to see this moving on.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Young.
Mr. Griffith, you're still almost quarter of a million dollars under your projection of what this is going to cost, or $200,000 under your projection. Do I read that correctly?
About $150,000, yes, sir.
It's just that I can't add, so, I can read, I can't add.
And we had actually, that was actually down, if you remember, when we completed the 2010-2014 CIP, we had actually had accounted for some lower costs in that, so it's even a reduction from way back when we started the overall project back in 2004. So we're still seeing a substantial decrease in our construction costs, yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you. I might add, this project will essentially serve as the first phase as the final completion of the Stoneriver Greenway to Barfield Crescent Park. The construction of this bridge will allow the existing bridge on Barfield Crescent Road to become a pedestrian bridge, and we're currently in the appraisal, or have advertised for appraisers on that project and expect to begin that, the extension of the Greenway, the first part of 2012.
So we'll bypass the existing bridge and leave it in place?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Young.
You're still almost quarter of a million dollars under your projection of what this was going to cost, or $200,000 under your projection. Do I read that correctly?
About $150,000, yes, sir.
It's just that I can't add so fast. I can read, I can't add.
And we had actually... That was actually down. If you remember, when we completed the 2010-2014 CIP, we had actually had accounted for some lower costs in that, so it's even a reduction from way back when we started the overall project back in 2004. So, we're still seeing a substantial decrease in our construction costs. Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
I might add, this project will essentially serve as the first phase as the final completion of the Stoneriver Greenway to Barfield Crescent Park. The construction of this bridge will allow the existing bridge on Barfield Crescent Road to become a pedestrian bridge, and we're currently in the appraisal or have advertised for appraisers on that project and expect to begin that, the extension of the Greenway, the first part of 2012.
So, we'll bypass the existing bridge and leave it in place?
Yes, sir.
And we've already done some extensive sewer work out there, is that correct?
There's actually quite a bit of waterline work has been... It was recently completed by CUD in that area in the efforts to... Basically, to get out of the way of this project.
But there's no sewer.
There's been some sewer extension out there, but most of that has occurred some time ago.
Thank you. Other questions regarding this recommendation to accept this bid?
I move for no other questions. I move we approve the low bid.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Are there any questions regarding the motion? If not, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Mr. Griffith, I think Vice Mayor has a question.
I just wanted one question. Can you update on the leg going from, I guess, I-24 to Joby Jackson over to 231? What's the County Farm Road update on that?
Yes, sir. We are... Currently have about five more properties that we haven't actually completed the purchase on. If you remember, that was a joint project with... Not on the Department of Transportation, but also with the county. We have to be completely... Well, we have to be completed with the right-of-way acquisition, turn around, submit all of that to the state for their final approval. We expect that that'll be shortcoming as far as completing that and expect to have a contract for construction back to the council later this summer.
Okay. Shortly in the road-building businesses.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith.
All right. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act.
Mayor.
Ms. Wright, thank you.
This is something we do annually. As the city government, we're allowed to reclaim funds that we turn into the state each year after they've had an opportunity to try to give those funds to their rightful owners, and we will retain the ability here to, if we ever get a claim, to give that money to the owner, but we are able to keep that money here as opposed to letting the state hang on to it in perpetuity.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Wright regarding this resolution requesting these balances? All right, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Attorney with regards to the proposed sale of 4150 Veterans Parkway. Welcome, Mr. Ives.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Always good to be here. We are proposing... Asking you to approve the sale of a property. This is a house that used to sit on about two acres. It sits on about 1.7 acres now, and it was on Old Moreland Lane, around a quarter mile south of Highway 96. In connection with Veterans Parkway 3C, we had to purchase the entirety of the house and lot because the road widening and the waterline that went in between the road and the house took out the only soils area for the septic system. So, we purchased the house. The house was appraised at $420,000. The owner got another appraiser. We also had to pay... Were required to pay under state law some moving expenses and items of that nature, and ultimately, we did enter into a settlement with... And had full title to the house. After looking at a variety of options, council approved back in January retaining Larry Sims Realty Auction to auction the house for us, and went through a number of preparation steps, and the auction was held this last Saturday. The high bid on Saturday was $107,000. And somewhat interestingly, the bid is from a family member of a person, of people who live almost directly across the street, so they're familiar with the property. They're also familiar with the process and familiar with the sewer issues that they have to face. That sewer issue is that it appears, at least when we had a soils expert check it out, it appears there's no other site on this 1.7 acres that will perk. So, to get sewer system, they will put in a grinder pump and approximately 3,700-foot force main, which is about an inch and a half pipe with a pressure pump on it, to pump the sewage to the existing city sewer. They'll run just under the city right-of-way, up to Highway 96, and then along Highway 96 over to Overall Creek, and then have to cross Overall Creek to connect to our sewer. The estimate they've received to do this is $85,000, so they're going to have to make a significant investment on top of their purchase price. There are some upkeep issues. That house sat vacant for about two years. There's at least one interior water leak that needs to be fixed, but all of those issues are theirs to take care of. Again, it seems like a very low price for a $420,000 house, but there are a couple of good reasons for this price, and one is that they're going to have to spend at least $85,000 and possibly more. There's rock out there, and there are always problems in construction, so they're going to have to pay another round numbers, close to $100,000, to make the house livable. And while I think the house will appraise for more than $200,000, it's questionable how much more. This house used to set a fair distance away from a quiet, remote county road, country road. It's now fairly close to a five-lane road. So, there would... Had the original owner wanted to remain in the house and wanted us to put sewer in so he could stay there, we would most likely have paid him a significant amount of proximity damages for the road coming closer to it. The alternative to accepting this bid would seem to be for the city to go ahead and install that sewer system, and then whether we auction it or just list it, try to sell it with sewer. There's a good chance that we would get some more than the money we spend to put the sewer in, but there's no guarantee of that. There's certainly a chance that we would end up not getting that much back on top. And in addition, if the city goes that direction, the house is going to sit empty for a while longer, which causes problems. We noted in my cover letter, we did have some vandalism that we discovered during the time the house sat empty, and getting it under private ownership, who's going to take active interest in it, is going to be good for everyone. For that... All that reason, we recommend approval of this contract. We expect to close by next Friday, Friday the 13th, and we'll have the closing... We will have to provide, as we agreed to, to provide a title policy to the buyer. Any questions?
Is the property in the city?
It is in the city limits.
Other questions for Mr. Ives?
I would note that both our Water and Sewer Department and Code's Department will be monitoring the installation of that sewer, while the homeowner there will pay for all of the sewer installation, including the grinder pump, of course, and the tight line. Once that's complete, the line itself will be accepted by the Murfreesboro Water Sewer Department, so it'll be a city sewer. We've also made a condition that this can only serve a single-family house, the existing house. If someone wants in the future to convert this to some other use, of some commercial use of any kind, they would then have to put in a gravity sewer line to connect to the existing city sewer wherever it might be at that time. So, this gravity... This type of pump works fairly good for a small use. It's not good for a large use, so we wouldn't want a major fast-food restaurant running off of a system like this, and we're preventing that by the contract.
That's a condition of the contract?
Yes.
Is that right? Other questions? If there are no other questions, what are your wishes regarding the sale of 4150 Veterans Parkway?
Move we accept the recommendation of the city attorney.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second with regards to a proposed sale of this 4150 Veterans Parkway. Any questions regarding the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Are there any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, we had them laid out on your desk tonight. We have two special events, one for the Discovery Center's fundraiser at 1523 Mirabella Way, and one for the Youth Empowerment Through Arts and Humanities special event at 116 North Walnut Street. We also have a restaurant at 2943A South Rutherford Boulevard, which is a new location, and all three of these have met our requirements.
All right, all meet requirements. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have before you a list of the statements to consider for payment. Imagine, so if you've had an opportunity to review those bills, do you think we should pay them?
Maybe we pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I do not have any Board or Commission appointments, do you, Mr. Lance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other business from the staff or the city council to come before the council? Mr. Calo, I see you moving fast.
Yes, sir.
Come in.
Haven't seen you in a week, Mr. Mayor.
I know. You've gotten your hair cut since then, too.
You're right. The mayor and I spent an enjoyable morning a week ago, the culminating effort of National Community Development Week. We had a dedication ceremony on Kerr Avenue, 217 Kerr Avenue, on a community development project that was a reconstruction of a new house, and the cool thing about it was our contractor, our partner, was Habitat for Humanity, and it was Habitat House 100 for Rutherford County. So, we worked in partnership on that. It was a great afternoon.
Congratulations to both of you, the Community Development Department and to Habitat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items that we need to consider this evening. The first, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, our funding source, requires the city to submit an action plan for community development block grant funds to be submitted no later than 45 days before the beginning of the fiscal year on July 1. We've developed that plan. We've had two public hearings, and the proposal has been out for public review and comment for 30 days. We've received no written comments on the proposed plan. The plan is based on new CDBG funding of $589,331. That's an estimate that was... An estimate that was supplied by HUD, represents a cut of $110,831, a 15.8% cut from our current funding level. But I emphasize that's an estimate because we're not expecting to get the exact number until approximately June 1, but because the dates that we're required to hit, we've been instructed to go ahead and submit our plan based on that estimate. Our proposal calls for funding our core programs, housing rehab, affordable housing assistance, microenterprize loans, and public services. I've attached an information sheet that summarizes how we propose to spend our resources and particularly the agencies that we would propose to fund with our public service projects. We would ask you to authorize the mayor to sign the required certifications in the plan and authorize my office to submit the plan to HUD.
All right. You have this recommendation from Mr. Calo, the Community Development Director. Are there any questions regarding the recommendation?
Would these be all the agencies we're going to fund?
Through community development. This is pass-through money that would come from the federal government, would not be city taxpayer-specific, but yes, for community development only. We'll have a considerable list during the budget for other dollars, perhaps.
And the plan has been available and remains available on the city website for anyone who'd like to review that. It's about 74 pages long.
All right, you have this plan before you. If there are no questions, is there a motion that we accept it?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Our second item, on May 3, 2011, bids were opened for a housing rehab project at the subject address, which is 702 Bradieville Pike. The specifications call for reconstructing the home. Four bids were received. Those are listed on your sheet. Homeowners accepted the low bid. We expect the contractor, homeowner, to sign the contract on Monday morning. We recommend authorizing the mayor and/or the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Funding for the project will come from our home grant from THDA and community development block grant funds.
All right. Any questions regarding this housing rehabilitation contract? If there are no questions, is there a motion to accept?
I move we accept the recommendation.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Calo.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm going to check the weather forecast right now, and the reason for doing so is to make sure that the weather for Jazz Fest is going to be fabulous, and it is, so I recommend that everyone participate, show up for Jazz Fest this year. It's going to be great weather, so be there. It'll be fun. It's going to have some night activities and some daytime activities this year, so I think that'll be outstanding. And, Mr. Griffith, while you're still here, I forgot to ask you earlier how the Manny Construction Project is going. I see that as I take my all-terrain car through there, that there's some curb-and-gutter work underway in the, I guess, the closest to Broad Street section, so kind of give us an update. And I might remind everyone that obviously we have an update available on our webpage, and you can see that at any time, kind of see where we're going with that, so give us an update on the Manny Avenue project.
Yes, sir. We should have a new update if it's not on there already. It should be within the next couple of days, and we also mail those out to the local businesses and local residents along the construction path. The construction's going very well. Basically, milestone two. We'll stop us at State Street, and we'll kind of regroup and go back, and as you mentioned, we've already began curb-and-gutter construction through that area. We'll come back in with the sidewalks. Ms. Shannon Logan has picked out our brick pavers and our colored concrete for the decorative portion of the project, and we'll start work with it also. We're expecting within... In about a month to begin paving on some of the areas that are disturbed now, so the folks that are from State Street back to Broad Street and also on Castle should get some relief from all the... and also on Castle should get some relief from all the off-roading that they're facing right now. And as always, I appreciate very much their patience with this as we try to get through this project.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith? We appreciate the work and appreciate the, I guess, the forethought and pre-planning. It's hard to think of everything to do when you have a project like this, but I think you've done an exceptional job in providing information. I think you're setting a new standard, I would say, and I know our residents, even though they are disturbed and there's some difficult days ahead, I know they appreciate this and at least the heads-up and certainly the supervision and all the work that's going on there. I think it's going to be an excellent opportunity for us to just rehabilitate a wonderful neighborhood in our community. I'm looking forward to it, and now that the curb-and-gutters and the sidewalks and some paving will be underway, I think everybody will get an opportunity to kind of see how it's going to look when it's finished all the way through. So my congratulations. I know there's been plenty of long hours and hard work and a lot of great thought put into that, and my compliments to you, and I'm sure the council would feel the same way.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?